All right. Welcome to the June 9th Planning Board Meeting 2016. Allison, would you call the roll?
Mr. Heskey?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knower?
Here.
Tiding?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nursing her?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Wyser?
Here.
All right. We have minutes for the June 26th meeting. You'll get a chance to take a look at them. If somebody want to move to...
Move to crew?
Move to second. Seconded Bastian and Burton.
Okay. Heskey?
Aye, here. What, yes.[56.71][56.71](Laughter).
Bastian?
Here. Yes, aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
Okay.
Now that we got our vocabulary down.
One table item?
Yep. Table item has continued with the David Manning Project. We do not have any updates except for the fact that we recently spoke to them, and they're working on their wetland delineation as they're wired to through the tabling resolution. The town engineer spoke to their applicant about that. They've seen the stakes out on the property with the flags, so they are working on the site. We're not just tabling this to keep tabling it. So until we find out more than that and get some revised plans in response to the comments, if there aren't any questions from the board, we could have another continued table motion.
Motion to continue table that application?
All right. I'll second it.
Heskey?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tiding?
Aye.
Bigger King. Miscellaneous items, we have one. It's Burger King again. Previously, the board discussed this. We only had elevation drawings to work off of. Now we have a colored rendering, which was requested from two meetings ago along with a couple site photos from other locations. Right now, we have the colored rendering up. This still matches what they show on the building elevations that were previously submitted, and now we have them in color. I'm not sure if there are any questions or further discussions like they have about the color scheme. There's a cut, there's one on the screen now of a actual built one to give you a better idea of the colors that the paper's indicating.
Do you know where that one is?
No. I do not.
There's one in Henrietta that looks like it.
And there's also one in Rockport, too, that I drove past and forgot to take a picture of it. Very similar to everything we see here with the new designs.
Any comments?
I think it's pretty consistent with their branding.
The motion would be just to send a letter with the board's approval.
Moved by Burton, seconded by Bastian?
Correct.
Heskey?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tiding?
Okay. Any other miscellaneous?
No other miscellaneous items, only table items.
Okay. Four minutes in and...
Done a lot.
We will go into recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock for the public hearing. Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2016 Meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. As with all our meetings, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and make a special welcome to our scouts in the, in the audience. What troop?
Troop 312.
312? All right. Welcome, Boy Scout Troop 312. We have two items on our agenda tonight. The way our process works is the applicant will come up to the podium, present the, the idea that they have, their application. The board will, once they're finished, the board will ask questions, then we'll open up for audience participation. We welcome all your comments. It's a main reason that we have public hearings is to get public input on potential projects. And after that, if the board doesn't have any other questions, we go on to the next item and so on. So Zach, if you could read the first item, please, that'd be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Free Methodist Church of Webster Doing Businesses Crossroads Church Community Church, 1188 Jackson Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for a 4,000-square-foot parking lot expansion with associated site improvements on 3.15-acre parcel. The property is now reformally owned by the Free Methodist Church of Webster and is zoned R-120. Application 16P-0005, SBL number 095.01-1-14.1. And I just have one correction to make from the legal. We listed a 4,000-square-foot parking lot expansion. That number includes the parking spaces, the square footage for the parking spaces alone. When you include the drive aisles of the parking expansion, that number is actually 8,600 square feet. I just wanted to make that clear for everyone in the audience who may have had questions and to take care of that. And with that, come on up.
I'm Junior Lee, and what we are intending to do is expand the church, as Zach said. The parking lot, that is. Reason we're expanding, well, first, we need to repair. The current parking lot is 25 years old, maybe a little bit more than that, and it's badly broken up. And we've been blessed the last few years, and we've got quite a few more members in the church, and we need to expand to accommodate. And this is especially true when we have special events, because sometimes there's been a lot of people parking on the road, which is not a safe thing. So that's our intent, and I trust everyone has the latest plan that was distributed today?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we just got it tonight, and if you could put that up like you are doing, then millions of people at home watching TV can see it as well.
This is the church. This is Mr. Olek Spapni. The one concern that the board had was that we were pretty close here. We've applied for variance to get closer there. That application was made today. We've got all this work done with Larue McMahon, very good engineers. They've developed a plan to take care of the water runoff from the parking lot. We've added a few handicap parking places up here near the front door of the church. Makes it easier to access. What can I say?
Okay. Well, thank you. This is all proposed to be paved?
Yes.
Okay. And is the, the setback at that corner there?
Knocking hand?
Yes, that you're asking for the variance. That's a...
That's what we're asking for, the variance, yes.
And the setback, the proposed setback's 15 feet?
Yes.
What about the setback from the corner at the northernmost portion?
Northern?
You know what that is? Yeah, where the, where the lot ends, yeah.
Greater than?
I don't have an exact number, but looking at the plan, it's got to be more than 15. Yeah, 15 is here, and we're nearly another 20 feet beyond that.
Okay, so maybe 30, 35 feet?
Yeah.
Something like that? And do you have any handicap spots at the moment that are delineated?
Pardon?
You mentioned that you're adding handicap spots. Are there any currently?
Yes. Currently, we have, we have a big, big one right here in the front where they can park. It's a short walk. And here, we're adding a few more, and we also have two at the back door.
Okay. Okay. It's great news that the church is growing. Anybody else, any questions?
I had one question. Your existing parking lot right now, that's well within a 50-foot setback currently. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay. And if I look at the northeast corner of the existing lot, that's not changing?
Of the proposed new?
No, the existing lot that's in place now, I think on the diagram you're showing it is existing parking. That northeast corner is not changing.
I'm unsure what we're talking about.
Okay. If we go to the existing parking lot, which is east, I'm sorry, this corner right here.
Yep, just rehashing. The top end, the north section of the parking lot.
Right there. So it's in existence.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I know we have at least one person from the audience that would like to speak. Do we have Mr. Lee Olek? If you could come up and state your name and address, that would be terrific.
My name is Lee Olek. My address is 1175 State Road. I'm the immediate neighbor.
Okay, so you're the house...
Yes.
Right next door?
Yes.
Okay.
I attended this similar meeting 15 years ago when, when they asked to have their parking lot expanded then. They need it then, and they need it now. And I say, yes, please do it. They need the help, and I have no problem with them.
Okay?
Okay, now, I've, I've got a problem with your request of them. Your request of them is that you want them to remove some trees and put a berm back there and a water, a rain garden or whatever catchment. Okay? Well, my, my problem with that is that you want to remove trees that are doing the job that you want the, the berm and rain garden to do. Why remove the trees? They absorb... Each tree that's back there now will absorb 15 to 20 gallons of water per day. And the trees that are back there are performing the job that you want to do. If you remove the trees, you, it's a redundancy.
Understand your point?
Next point. If you, if you remove the trees that are in there now, you're going to be affecting the, the ecology of the area, the, the animals that live in there. And what I don't want to see is the trees removed so the animals and the birds are forced out of that area. So my, my point is, if those trees are, are serving a purpose now and doing a good job at it, why remove them?
I think that the suggestion is more DEC stormwater. Zach, would you like to address it? Sure.
The reason, and we can confirm this with the town engineer after the meeting tomorrow if, and we can follow up with you about it. The reason why the rain garden is required is that any improvements on properties within the IWC, which is for Rondacoit Creek watershed, anything over 6,000 square feet requires stormwater mitigations such as that rain garden there. Water has to be treated on-site to prevent too much runoff, and that's why it's there. If the expansion was under 6,000 square feet, the tree removals, the grading, the rain garden, that wouldn't be required. But there's a threshold that was reached under that requirement for the IWC, and that's why you see it on the plan here. Maybe something else, maybe something could be explored between the engineers more than this, but this is the site plan we're working with currently.
I don't know if that explained things.
But again...
I understand what you're saying, and I, normally, I would agree with you.
And I think one of the, I think we find ourselves in one of those situations where, okay, in the grand scheme of things, everybody would agree with making rules to treat stormwater in a certain way.
I, I...
And in this particular situation, you make very good points. So we find ourselves somewhat between a rock and a hard place, and I think that the engineering staff can...
Well, the problem is, the problem is that that pond that back there was put in as
Stormwater regional...
Stormwater catchment.
Mm-hmm.
And it's done, since that pond is, was put in there, it's done a good job because it's, it's taking care of the, the stormwater that, that has been building up down on the Angian Drive area. At the east end of Angian Drive, all those houses down there were having trouble with stormwater in their basements. When you put that pond back there...
Helps out.
It's, it's helped. It's taken care of. It's not, and the thing is, at the outlet end, which would be the outlet end on the north side of that pond, is an outlet that is a, it's a stream that runs dry almost all year long. There's almost no runoff out of that pond. Where's it going? Where's, where's the salt runoff going to go?
All right. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Do we have any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Do you have any final statements or are you good?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number two.
Application number two, Michael Ritchie, Costas Engineering, 217 Lake Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14608. On behalf of Mike D'Amico, Combat Construction, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for a three-lot subdivision to construct two new single-family residential homes on a total of 1.9 acres located at 1429 Shoe Craft Road. The property is now reformally owned by John and Nancy Williamson and is zoned R-120. Application number 16P-0008, SBL number 109.07-1-12.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ritchie from Costas Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of our client Combat Construction. Also with me, Mark DiFrancesco, partner on the project. We're here tonight requesting subdivision and site plan approval for the property located at 1429 Shoe Craft Road. The proposed subdivision consists of dividing a 1.9-acre parcel into three single-family residential lots. Two new homes will be constructed on lots two and three. The existing house on lot one will remain, and the driveway will be relocated from Shoe Craft Road to Garden Hill Lane. This project was previously in front of the town proposing four lots based on comments from town staff. The project has been revised to show three lots. This layout as it is meets the requirements of the R-120 zoning district. Comments have been received from the town and county DRC. We did get a chance to review and respond to the town comments. We've also sent revised plans based on those comments. We did receive, like I said, county comments a few days ago. They don't seem major and should be able to be handled relatively easily. In conclusion, we believe this three-lot subdivision on Shoe Craft Road fits within the neighborhood and the character of the community, and it should be a benefit to the area. With that, I welcome any questions the board or anybody else may have.
Okay, thank you. Bill, do you want to...
My first question is on the site distance for lot number two on Shoe Craft.
Correct.
In the PRC memo I read, that the site distance should be 445 feet.
Correct.
And you're showing 335 feet?
Yeah, that, what we had shown is, it was a...
Excuse me, Mike?
Yes.
Can you move the map up? There's a mic behind it that is being covered. You may have to use the clips. Sorry, thank you. That might be able to hold them.
Put three or four of them on there.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry, Bill.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, based on the PRC comment for lot number two, the comment was based on one, based in the site distance design on the design speed instead of the posted speed limit, which we had done. And a lot of times, in terms of the site distance per the New York State DOT chart, there can be confusion as to what the reference is. It's like the distance left and distance right, whether it's, it should be the person sitting in the car, their vantage point. Obviously, if they were to turn right onto Shoe Craft Road going south, the important thing for them, obviously, traffic's this way, traffic to the, distance to the left would be the, the important number to look at. Basically, I'm rambling on about something I shouldn't. We had, we had shown the provided site distance based on our required calculation. Once the new required distance was shown, the distance was able to be updated. We, we didn't show, obviously, site distance to the north is longer than the required distance. We didn't have survey that would show the ultimate total distance, because they would have to go ways down the road. So in our opinion, it meets the required minimum distance, and that's how we responded in the PRC comments. Kind of a long-winded way around it, but...
Okay. And you're going to ask for a sidewalk waiver for Shoe Craft?
Uh, no, we are proposing a five-foot-wide sidewalk on Shoe Craft and Garden Hill Lane. Is that incorrect?
I think we probably, we might want to discuss that.
That may need to be discussed, then. Sorry.
Okay. And last question is, I just want to verify that there's no variances required from the ZBA?
That's correct. Revised the site layout to meet the minimum requirements of the R-120 district.
Okay. That's all I have, AJ.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Anyone in the audience care to comment? Yes, sir, please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Dale Merz. I live at 1399 Shoe Craft, but I also own 1419, which is right next door.
Okay.
I pretty much have no problems. Did I say there will be sidewalks? Did I hear that?
They're showing sidewalks.
Uh, they're...
But it's up for discussion.
They, it sounds like they may seek a waiver from the town board, but...
Okay.
It's hearsay at this point.
Okay. I mean, I like the plan. My main concern is water runoff. I'm hoping that they'll pipe the gutters and so forth out to the street and try to drain it towards the street, because everything here runs this way. This house has always had some water issues, not severe, but some. There used to be a spring in this, right in this corner that ran about half of the year, but then when Monroe County put the water line through, I think they bedded it in stone, and that stopped that spring from coming out on the surface. I suspect it goes that way now. But my only request is that, please, no water coming this way. I spent like $7,000 down by my house putting in a French drain to ensure that would be dry. The land there does not absorb any water. The top of that hill is really wet, and my hopes are that it will be drained out. There is existing culvert here, and there's one up in, probably in here. The ditch is open for a section, probably piped from in this area up to this corner, and there's a catch basin right here in the corner. But there is open ditch there. I don't, I don't have a problem with the ditch, but I would like to see gutters and so forth drained out. Sidewalks would be nice, and I keep hoping that we'll get them all the way up Shoe Craft, but it's not. The drainage is my main issue.
Okay.
Other than that, compared to the last plan, I like it. Which, where is this site? This driveway would be where it shows? Or which way is the site distance? Coming this way is the concern? Didn't I hear you say that there was a landisite issue with that driveway?
Yes, that was, I believe that was looking to the north, but as the applicant stated...
It's south.
I'm being corrected. They were, hang on, I was being corrected. Thank you, guys. It's actually the distance to the south, but as the applicant was stating, the survey they did, the survey work that they did limited the number that they could show on the plan. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I heard.
Maybe I can ask it direct. I'm trying to...
Yeah, ask him.
Yeah. So that, if the driveway was to move, which way would it move? More to the north, more to the south?
In our opinion, it would need to move either...
Guys, we just have, I'm sorry, we have to try to capture that on the microphone. So Mr. Merz, he can answer that after, or...
I can respond back to that.
If you want, yeah. We direct that question to the board and then...
Okay. That was just my question. I was hoping it wouldn't move more to the north.
Okay.
If it moved to the south, I would, could care less, but...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to respond now? Is there anyone else?
Sure.
I can respond to both questions, the first one being stormwater. We have proposed small drain swales to intercept any runoff that were to come off the back side of the property. We've also proposed a, a small stormwater dry pond, which won't contain water in it all year round, but it is capable of handling any runoff which may come from the back of the lots, and it'll capture it and let it go at a reduced rate. The front of the property does sheet on to Garden Hill Lane and Shoe Craft Road. Unfortunately, since the, there is no storm sewer along Garden Hill Lane, can't really send that runoff to a storm sewer there. And with the catch basin at the very corner of the property on Shoe Craft Road, can't gravity feed it to storm sewer over there. So we have proposed to send them to the swales and treat it in a little stormwater pond before directing it in a controlled manner to the north side.
You can't send any of it the other direction on Shoe Craft?
I mean, some of it, like I said, the, the frontage of the property does sheet towards Shoe Craft, so it would just basically be the backyards and the roof itself. So, and, and... So, and, and based on town comment, they had requested that roof runoff from the existing house be sent to Shoe Craft Road and we are proposing to do that. So, it'll be less runoff because that was discharging to sump pump here that'll now go to the storm sewer on Shoe Craft.
How about the gutters off to that house?
The gutters on the existing, yeah, the gutters and sump pump will drain to Shoe Craft, to, toward Shoe Craft. Sorry, should direct it to you.
Okay.
But there will be a retention pond of some nature in the back corner?
That's correct. We have proposed a small stormwater basin.
You are gonna send the water my direction.
And we're going to release it in a controlled manner. That's correct.
Toward me?
This church ultimately to the northwest.
But I own all that back there.
Mr. Mers, when you're talking back there, we can't capture anything on the record, so if you have more questions, try and do it up here at the mic.
I'm sorry, but...
No, it's okay. I just wanted to clean up the dialogue.
That runoff, I mean, I own this land back here too.
Right.
Okay.
And that's where they're saying it's gonna drain that way. And it's already wet extremely.
If you'd like, I have, we have a copy of the plan that's not as colored as that one that shows the grading or maybe Mike has it and if you, if you'd like to take a look at that maybe.
Maybe existing and proposed.
It shows the proposed grading with the swales, a more clear picture. And Mike, maybe if you want to put it up on the board. Thank you.
Just to add on, to note that existing drainage does today flow in that direction. We aren't changing the pattern of flow, but like I said, we are trying to slow it down, detain it, and let it go at a reduced rate.
And reduce the flow?
Correct, correct.
But you had more impervious surfaces, you know, there's, there's, my take on it is there's gonna be more runoff from this area because of the impervious surfaces, either the house or the...
I would argue that it might be a slight increase due to the removal, future removal of the barn on the property and the fact that the existing house will be sent to storm sewer system. There will also be a reduction in the amount of driveways that are currently on the property now, so it will be close to a net wash in terms of impervious area draining to the northwest corner after the project is complete.
But there's no chance of any, running any of it toward the front?
Like I said, this existing house, all of it will go to Shoe Craft Road.
But the new one, no, huh?
Just gravity wise, we can't send it to a storm sewer. There's not enough fall, there's not enough grade change to make that work. And there is no storm sewer along Garden Hill Lane?
No, I know there isn't, but this actually, the sketch basin in the backside of it is fairly deep.
We did look into that and there wouldn't be enough cover over the top of a pipe to adequately put a storm sewer in through there.
He's the house.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the, from, yes, ma'am, please?
Sorry, I didn't sign up ahead. My name is Lou Ann Reynis. I live at 1428 Shoe Craft Road, directly across the street from the existing house. And I was part of reviewing the previous plan, so I just wanted to say, A, I'm happy with the current plan and obviously I'm curious about the water, you know, what, what Mr. Mers is, is asking about. So, in general, I just want, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that it was revised because there were considerable issues with the original plan. I just think it's important to voice that kind of opinion and not just let it go like, oh, those, you know, complaining neighbors. So, just want to thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone, any more questions from the board? Okay, I guess this, if there's nothing else, we will call this hearing closed. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
And have, have a wonderful rest of your night.
Why don't we talk about the Crossroads Church first, do a order? Unless you want to go backwards, one of these, pleasure?
We got numbers on these things. We'll go with number one.
Okay.
Church is good.
So, can we check into the getting rid of trees versus a rain garden?
Before we go that far, I think Mike can speak better to what I was trying to say about why stormwater designs are the way they are on this property.
Right. Well, there's the IWC guidelines because the town's in part of the Rancoy Creek watershed. So, anything that's above 6,000 square feet of new impervious pavement, you need to provide water quality aspect to take the, you know, runoff from the pavement and treat it before it goes anywhere else. So that was our recommendation at sketch plan, saying, well, you have over 6,000 square feet, you need to provide something basic, you know, before it goes into that pond behind it. With the aspect of bringing it up to the trees or better at reducing it, I don't think there's the quality aspect that the IWC guidelines recommend. So that's why I think that we can maybe look at modifying the location or, you know, doing something differently, but, you know, I don't know how many trees are we removing. I don't think the plan shows, you know, how many trees that would be taken out.
Yeah, it doesn't, the application doesn't really detail what that is, but...
Right.
It seems to me that it would be reasonable for staff to, to look at the potential for alternatives that maybe minimizes tree removal.
Right. We can maybe look at a couple of dry wells or something like that. So, I don't know, I don't remember the berm being there the last time. I don't know why they would necessarily need the berm, which just adds extra depth to...
Right.
So, the berm, to me, doesn't need to be there unless it's just to kind of corral the water to make sure that it goes into the rain garden. But yeah, there's other ways we can do this. Like I said, dry wells or, you know, there's underground storage that they could use too, but it's a lot of cost analysis and stuff like that.
So maybe, maybe town staff could work this board for us, ask them to prepare an alternative plan for stormwater foundation.
Right. I mean, we didn't tell them what they needed to provide. We did, well, we told them they needed to provide something. We didn't tell them how or, you know, there's, there's cost aspects that they can look at to try to reduce the area of disturbance, basically.
What's everybody else feel on this?
Mike, would impervious pavement help?
Eh, it would. There's a bigger maintenance headache, I think, with impervious pavement with the salting and the stuff like that. You have to vacu- or vacuum it out and you have to, you know, wash it and, you know, in order to, you know, make sure that it's properly working, so.
How many trees are actually being removed?
Well, that would be my question.
When you pulled up the view, it didn't look like there would be that many trees removed, unless I'm not seeing.
Well...
All those trees? There's a lot.
Not entirely too many, really, when you look at it from that view. The current part, where did we just go?
I'm just turning it so it's in the same direction as the...
So, I always forget the laser pointer for this. I just want to, can you just bring the PDF up itself? It shows...
Drag off a bit.
Your current, that stone that we see, the dirt, is this line here? Comes around, so it's kind of like your existing conditions. Then we have to go this far back for the parking, further back for sort of drive aisle and rain garden. So, it is going back a bit. The number of trees back on the aerial doesn't need to be too extreme, but again, the plan does not, does not show or quantify how many trees to be removed based on what you're seeing there in the aerial. That is something that the board could ask as part of a table resolution to show that on the map to inventory the trees and show which, or at least designate which ones are coming out on the plan for a more specific answer for the resident.
And PRC did come in on maybe switching some of the parking to the south a little bit, which would help reduce, you know, the tree removal and stuff like that, so, I mean, there's other possibilities of laying out the parking lot.
It looks like they're gonna have to remove trees just to accommodate the parking lot.
Right.
Right.
So...
Yeah, certainly those two right there.
Yeah.
All right, so it could be much less impact than we're making it out to be.
Yeah.
If you'd like to see it on a map, um...
They can identify.
For identifying those. It's important to note that this application will be going to the zoning board in their July 21st application or meeting. Let me just check the date. Which would be, yes, it's the, there you go, 21st, which would be after the board's meeting on the 14th. So we still have two meetings before they have a decision from the zoning board potentially with time for these revisions. So again, looking at alternative drainage designs besides a rain garden, their engineer can look into that as well as updating the site plan to show the trees that are being removed. Those are two items that we can include in a table resolution.
And potentially whether or not there are any alternative options that would minimize to satisfy the...
Right. As Mike was just saying, one of the PRC's comments was they might want to investigate whether it be what their efforts to...
Their response did not address that.
No, they, they still wanted, we, they came in and spoke with us, they still wanted to go this direction with the parking, even knowing that they would have to go with the zoning board's application as well.
Okay. Any other notes you guys have?
Couple of the notes I had was if the board wanted to ask if any proposed lighting was to be added to the parking lot or at the building for this. I didn't see anything on the plan for that.
It doesn't look like there's anything there now.
Not from what I see, no. That's just, is it a pole?
No, there's no trees.
No, to the left, that, that's probably a light. Yeah, it has to be a light.
It was dusted on.
Yep.
Between the parsonage and the church.
Correct.
How do you more for security versus parking lot?
So that was one question staff we had in our notes as well as if any additional plantings. Hello, forgetting that.
Between, no, there's a blind spot between the church.
That is dark.
Right. So, I was gonna say, can't see it, but I think the pole's right there.
You got a pole, you got a pole going back there, so...
Oh, wow. Yeah, it looks a lot different.
Extremely dark. Again, lighting, if that's a question that the board would like to ask clarification for. Any additional plantings for buffering or fencing for buffering, if that's proposed for the adjacent property to the north, even though the resident did speak during the public hearing, says he's in favor of it, but has concerns about the tree removal. Perhaps offsetting some, some of the trees to be removed with trees to be planted could be an option as well. That's something we can include in a table resolution. I'm sorry to suggest it.
No, it's okay. All right.
They did state that they do outdoor parking events. That was gonna be a question before. They did acknowledge that they have plenty of events going on. They're probably aware that, they're obviously aware that it's a permitting process through the town for those events, but that would have been one of the questions as well. But they did kind of clarify that they plan to keep using this parking to help with those outdoor events and getting people off the street and onto the parking lot, so that's I think that's all the comments I think we would have had from staff, unless there are more from the board. So just to go over quickly, for a table and resolution, it sounds like we'd ask for the applicant to review their drainage designs. If the rain garden is their best option, is there something that would reduce the amount of land to be impacted, perhaps with a dry well? Identify the number of trees to be removed. Identify if any lighting is gonna be added to the parking for security. And any buffer plantings or fencing, will that be proposed for this site as well? Those are answers we should hopefully be able to get before the work session meeting on the 21st of this month.
Right. Okay.
If there's nothing else, we can entertain a motion to table.
Yeah.
So move. Second?
Burton and Bastian.
Okay, uh, Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Now?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
All right. That's table. So, Shoe Craft.
I'll let you guys start before I go in mine.
I would like clarification on the site distance. I'm still a little confused on that. Is it the 445 or is it, when I, when I look at the little table here on the eye test, coming out of the driveway going left, it says greater than 335.
Do you have that plan up though, that we can zoom into it possibly?
Is it 336? Is it 446? Because apparently it needs to be 445 minimum.
That, utility, Mike, remember?
Yeah, it was on the site plan.
That one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the applicant's response was that they've updated it and that they meet the minimum requirements in both directions.
Bill, we got it up here too.
Yeah, I'm there. Oh, it's greater than 44, okay. I was reading. Still says 335 on mine. Do they have the updated files?
Find the young eyes.
I can't read it.
Pass it down. There are...
Yeah, that says 335.
Okay. So this one says 429.
Yeah.
Question the mind.
It is? Oh, okay.
We have this.
Okay, never mind.
So, refer to this.
Sorry about that. Does that, does that...
If you want a clarification on why it got updated, was because they did a site distance and the posted speed limit is 35 miles an hour, but those numbers that they gave you in the original plan were for 30 miles an hour. So, my experience in my, you know, training, they always do five miles an hour, five miles an hour over the posted speed limit as the design speed because generally people go faster than the posted speed limit.
Takes them much longer to break.
So, but then there's other requirements on, there's intersection site distance and there's stopping site distance. Well, intersection site distance is what you want the best for basically pulling out and, you know, getting into the, that's what you feel comfortable with. Stopping site distance is basically if you see somebody pulling out, you need that distance to stop. Well, the stopping site distance required for 40 miles an hour is 305 feet. That's based on Ashdod's chart. So, we're comfortable with the site distance because I'm more concerned with the stopping than...
Okay, so, so you're happy?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Good.
It sounds like they're gonna have an internal discussion on whether or not they're gonna apply for a sidewalk waiver along Shoe Craft.
Sounds that way.
Is there sidewalks out there now?
No.
No. And just a little bit of history on that. Waivers were previously granted with Crown Point subdivision.
Yep.
And as Crown Point is intended to continue in its last phase on Garden Hill, where the trees are there, that was approved for a sidewalk waiver as well as Garden Hill out to Shoe Craft. Part of that also included, no sidewalks are included on the project's frontage. Part of that also included, those sidewalks are included on the project's frontage on the west side of Shoe Craft as well. This goes back to Crown Point. So waivers exist in the area. Part of Crown Point, when they come in for their next month, that phase where the hand is, I forgot what number it is because there's too many of them. A sidewalk will be installed along Plank to the corner of Shoe Craft. It will not wrap around, it just, it ends at the intersection. We did some research on that and we thought it may come down as what I just said, that, that portion of Shoe Craft will not require a sidewalk as part of Crown Point. At a later date, years down the road, the town may be able to provide sidewalks along this section of road. I think it's a good idea, but right now we have a lot of other gaps to fill in. Currently, we're also revising our sidewalk policy. The town board's reviewing that, and the town engineer is taking that on to increase our sidewalk waiver fee in these parts of towns. Currently, it's $500 per lot, and that just doesn't really cut it anymore. So we're evaluating a calculation-based method to determine the amount that residents, developers, I should say developers, we have to.
Hold you.
Cover for, for sidewalks.
Okay.
But I believe they'll be asking for a waiver. We can ask for clarification on that as well.
And town staff is satisfied with the water plan, drainage for stormwater?
Yeah. I mean, there is really no storm sewers that they could connect that house that's up to the north there on Shoe Craft.
For the, the plan, Doug, sorry, the utility.
We did ask them to provide the level lip spreader that kind of disperses the water evenly.
There you go.
They will detain it and definitely release it at a slower and improved rate, I would think, with that, so. It does currently drain that way now. And then we talked about when that area is developed off of the Garden.
Garden Hill.
Our Garden Hill, that we could maybe provide some catch basins or whatever that kind of collect it in the future.
So those, those would be located where?
Well, in the, in the property lines.
Yeah. Basically over the 899 and on the north side of 25 Garden Hill.
And then we would, we would maybe try to, if it was still an issue, we maybe try to get easements and bring up the storm further up.
So why don't, why don't we ask for easements now?
Well, because we don't, they're not.
But if it's a stormwater easement, you can, you can go on the property later on and pipe that pond.
It's these properties that I need, I would need the easements on. Not that property that, not that they're on, not the property they're on, we would need easements.
It would be about getting a pipe through the other properties first. That's where the easements would have to be acquired.
To the, to the west. We would need those easements. So we can look into that.
But I mean, when we do cross access easements, sometimes their landlack is not really helpful until the next applicant comes in too.
Right, their, their, their stormwater facility, if you want to call it, that is right in the corner. So it's basically where everything currently goes and drains.
I'm sure that they would be quite pleased to have a drainage structure to pick up.
Yes.
Any portion of that stormwater collection. I've been, I've been back there. I grew up not far from there. That's, that's wet every year. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have? Any comments on that? Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay.
So I'm just, just to clarify, I guess, what, what is the board feeling? We need more clarification on anything besides the sidewalk later, which is something they would handle with the town board. There's no other questions about drainage or site distances. Board could be in a position to request for.
Your draft approved.
Draft approval resolution. Table it.
Yeah, table it until next meeting. Prepare a draft.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Bastian, seconded by Kenauer.
Yep. Sorry.
I heard two neighbors come in and.
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Kenauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
Please move the pocket to drop over here.
Anything else?
That concludes our business for the evening. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you on the 21st.
Thanks.
Which is a reminder of Tuesday.
Tuesday. All right, next meeting is a Tuesday.
Next meeting is a Tuesday? What day is it?
Tuesday to 21st. All right, everybody good?